The Board, Douglas County Board of Commissioners, Special Call Meeting of August 19, 2025, will come to order. County Clerk, please take the role for the record.
Yes, ma'am. District One Commissioner Henry Mitchell.
Present.
District Two Commissioner Whitney Kenner Jones.
Present.
District Three Commissioner Martin Ratson.
Present.
District Four Commissioner Vice Chair Mark Alcaraz.
Present.
Chairman Dr. Ramona Jackson Jones.
Present and accounted for. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you want to read what's next?
Yes, ma'am. We do have a public hearing this morning regarding the millage rate, but first, before we open the public hearing, we're going to have a presentation from our Assistant County Administrator Tiffany Stewart Stanley.
Thank you so much, County Clerk. Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, County Administrator. We will start the presentation with a brief video.
What is the millage rate and how does it impact your money? In simple terms, the millage rate is what you owe in property taxes based upon the assessed value of your property. Each mil is equivalent to $1 of every $1,000. For example, if your property's assessed value is $100,000 and you multiply that amount by one mil, the amount you'd owe in taxes is $100. It's time for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to set the 2025 millage rate. Commissioners are currently considering a proposal from the County Administration Office to adjust the millage rate to 15.763 mils, an increase of 3.7 mils above last year's millage rate. So what will this mean to you in terms of dollars and cents? Based on the proposal, the property tax increase for a home with a fair market value of $350,000 is approximately $41 a month, or $496 a year for those with a homestead exemption. So where does your money go? Tax dollars fund general government, the judicial system, public safety and public works, health and welfare, parks and recreation, and planning and development. Keep in mind, the school system also assesses a millage rate which is separate from the county's rate. There are ways to lower your tax bill, including applying for a homestead exemption to be deducted from the amount you owe. Find out how to qualify for homestead and other exemptions by contacting the Tax Commissioners' Office for detailed information. Following a series of millage rate public hearings, commissioners will weigh citizen input along with budgetary information from the county administrators' office to make an informed decision. We value your voice and appreciate your input.
Thank you so much to our communications team and our Chief Communications Officer and her team for compiling that video for today's hearing. So what we want to do today is kind of get started. We know that there's been a lot of different information that's been in the media and the public about this millage rate process. And so what we want to do today is start off by just answering some frequently asked questions that we have all, I think, received. So we will start off with the first question I think that a lot of people want to know. So the question is, did the county go over budget in 2024?
I can't hear.
Okay, I'm going to try to talk louder. Can you hear me now?
That's a little better.
Okay. I don't know if we can turn it up or... All right, I'm going to speak as loudly as I can. All right, so I'll go back since I think some people... So did the county go over budget for 2024? And we're going to simply answer that question, no. The county did not go over budget for 2024. Here's a look at our unaudited operating results, and you'll see our gross revenue number, as well as our expenditure number, and our revenues came in slightly over our expenditures. All right. So what was the county's ending unassigned fund balance? So what is an unassigned fund balance? That's essentially the county's, what you would say, savings account. And so what we ended with that, in that amount for 2024 that carried into 2025 is the $39,694,256. And of course, Douglas County, per our county policy, seeks to maintain 90 days of operating expenses in the form of an unassigned and unrestricted fund balance. The next question that we've had currently is, is the county over budget for 2025? And the answer is no. The county is not over budget for 2025. We are currently in the eighth month of our fiscal year, and the county is currently under budget. So what was the adopted budget for 2025? The adopted budget for 2025, $130,925,100. The budget has since been amended to $137,313,291. And the amended budget is the revised version after the Board of Commissioners have made some necessary adjustments. All right. So what are those amendments that have been made? We have the list of all the amendments that have been made to the budget for 2025, and those amendments were made through... These are the amendments that were made through July 31st of this year, and they total $6,482,741. So what is the current, county's current unassigned...
Excuse me, Madam County Attorney. Could you read all these lines for the citizens? Thank you.
So each one of the lines. So we'll go with first one. The first one, the sheriff's medical contract, that was $2,457,900. The second is the Connect Douglas General Fund impact, that was $3,500,000. The third is the Greenway Trail project, which we needed a local match of $193,898. Then we purchased some software for our communications between the sheriff and the E-911 system for $65,000. We acquired capital equipment, two vans that we purchased from FTA for $50,414, and FTA is the Federal Transit Authority. And then we also purchased some necessary software in the amount of $215,529, and that totals to $6,482,741. So what is the county's current unassigned balance? What do we currently have in our savings account, as you would say? So the amount that's currently is $34,696,599. So why is the County Administration Office recommending a 3.7 millage rate increase? So the answer that you've seen in the media and the public is, our recommendation comes after careful consideration of the county's fiscal needs, balance against a growing strain of inflation, increased cost of goods and services, and uncertain state and federal funding. And that is very true. But essentially, the answer is costs are just simply going up for the county government. We have heard the citizens, we are aware that your costs are going up, but unfortunately, the same thing is happening for county government. We are hearing from department after department, the cost of them doing their business to effectively serve the citizens is rising, and it's the same services, but the costs So talked about the costs going up. So another thing to consider is the county has rolled back the millage rate for two consecutive years in 2023 and 2024, and most county departments are still operating off their 2023 budget Here is a chart that shows the millage rate for the past five years. So you see in 2021, 2021, and 2022, the millage rate has, was maintained. And then in 2023 and 2024, the county rolled back the millage rate two years consecutively. And so once again, the proposed millage rate increase from the County Administration Office is the 3.7 millage rate, which would yield an estimated $27 million. Okay. So what numbers are we looking at to kind of come up with that estimated $27 million? So we've already discussed the $6,482,741 and amended. So once the Board of Commissioner amends the budget, that becomes the budget moving forward. Here are some of the costs that we are having to consider moving forward. So we have to consider some costs for the sheriff's overtime and premium pay at $1,400,000. We have been mandated by the state for two new judicial appointments. We will have a state, new state court judge and a new Superior Court Judge pretty soon this year. Our general liability insurance is increasing. We have $1,900,000 for that. We have IT, software, and technology upgrades in the amount of $1,500,000. Our healthcare fund, we have to fund that shortage of $2,400,000, as well as a future cost of $2,400,000. Our pension fund contribution has increased for $2,500,000, and currently, we are carrying some ARPA grant positions that are carried forward from 2024. We also have to take into consideration the rising costs. So the county administrator is projecting roughly 3.5% or $5 million in a multi-year accumulated inflation because the millage rate has been, has not been increased over the past three years. So I know you've heard about our Douglas County investment plan. One of the questions that we've had, what, how is the county funding the reinvestment plan? And I want to provide a little background information. So per our strategic plan, this was formulated because we were hearing from citizens saying, we want to see how our dollars are being spent. We want our dollars to be spent into improving our facilities, into quality-of-life programs, and infrastructure. So the county committed to investing $100 million over three years, two years ago. And so you see here, these are the strategic goals, areas that that money has been invested in. And so you've seen these projects, and I will list them, our Boundary Waters Aquatic Center improvements, our Douglas County Library building improvement, Winston Park improvements, our new Fairbent Road Senior Center that's coming online, the new Coroner's Facility, the DOT maintenance facility. We will have a new DOT administration building, the landfill transfer station recycling center is in the works, a new backup E-911 facility. In order to make space in the courthouse for the new judges, we had to acquire a Development Services Annex. We are renovating the public health facility, and we've made updates to the Post Road and I-20 interchange. The Spine Road project has been completed. New Manchester Sidewalk project has been completed. The Stewart Mill Intersection project has been completed. We are currently working on our Chattahoochee Trail project, and the Highway 5 at Douglas Boulevard Turning Lane has been completed, as well as Liberty Road intersection. The funding for these projects, the overwhelming majority have come from the county's portion of the SPOSS, which will in total, after the end of the SPOSS, be $113,360,000. As you can recall, we received $28 million from the federal government for the American Rescue Plan Act. Those funds could only be used for certain items, and so we tried to make sure we use those to benefit our citizens. And then, of course, we received a $750,000 Community Development Block grant from the state of Georgia for the senior center, as well as other grant sources. So what is the value of a mil? Roughly, the value of a mil is the amount you see here, $7,785,396. So what effect will the proposed 3.7 millage rate increase have on the average Douglas County household? So we are average, we're using the average of about a $350,000 house, and the difference, if the millage rate is adjusted by the 3.7 mils, is around $496 per year, which roughly comes out to $41 per month. And then you'll see here...
Come on the border. All right. Please just allow her to finish.
And then we have also provided a monthly cost breakdown, so you can kind of see it in a more detailed level of where your funding goes. So of that $41 per month, you can see that about $13.12 of that goes to general government, $6.15 goes to our judicial system, public safety gets about $13.94, public works gets about $2.46, health and welfare about $0.82, and parks and recreation $2.87, and then planning and community development $1.64. So per month, that increase breaks down to about $41 per month. So what will happen if the millage rate is not raised? The County Administration Office will have to consider recommending the following measures. We will have to make adjustments to the budget to offset the costs. We will have to cut or scale back on services.[1345.13][1345.13](APPLAUSE).
Come on the border, please. Come on the border.
We will have to continue to deliver services at a new cost, or we will have to delay our council discretionary investments. But let me make this clear. These are just rec...[1363.83][1363.83](APPLAUSE). I want to make this very clear. These are just recommendations that the County Administration Office can consider. One of these things, all of these things, and we have to make those recommendations to our policymakers, who will then make the final, final decision about which path we move forward in. So I want to talk about some of the fiscal controls that we have in place in the county. So we do produce a monthly financial report that is published with the agenda and voted on by the Board of Commissioners, and this typically occurs at our second legislative session of the month. We have finance committee meetings that are scheduled quarterly. However, the chairman of that committee, Chairman Mitchell, and vice chairman Ratson have been meeting monthly to stay abreast of all of these issues that they know are coming forward with the millage rate. We also have a mid-year retreat and an end-of-year budget retreat that is open to the public, and the county also has fiscal policies that include debt policies and a fund balance policy. So the County Administration Office, we are committed to doing a concise assessment of the county's operations to ensure that we have examined all operating costs to provide the Board of Commissioners with a comprehensive fiscal year 2026 budget recommendation. We are working hard to manage the resources of the county. You know, to come before the public, to come before the board, and to recommend a millage rate is difficult. You know, we have to look at everything with, I think, the County Administration Office is the only office that has to look at everything from a 50,000-foot level, and we have to balance. If I take from here, what goes here? What is in the best interest of the community? What is in the best interest of the Board of Commissioners? So it's a difficult job. I know people don't understand, but it is a difficult job. But we really do try to listen to our citizens. We try to listen and guide the board and make recommendations that we feel like will maximize the county's resources. So we will continue to do that with whatever the board decides, and we will try to make sure that the county has everything that they need and the citizens have everything that they need. So I will yield at this time.
Thank you, Madam Assistant County Administrator and also our Chief of Staff. Appreciate you. We will now open the public hearing. Please state your, please, Lisa, I'm so sorry. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. Each speaker may only address the board once during the meeting. Once you reach the podium, if you will please state your name clearly and your address for the record. And again, you'll have three minutes to address the board. So anyone who wants to speak can go ahead and line up.
Carolyn, excuse me. Carolyn M. Robbins.
Yes, you can still speak.
What's the date?
3632 Mill Lake Drive, Douglasville, Georgia.
I'm sorry, I can't...
Could you speak up just a little louder? Yes.
3632 Mill Lake Drive. My mother is currently on a fixed income. This millage hike would impact her in a negative way, and we just wanted to make her, make you guys aware of this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1594.86][1594.86](APPLAUSE).
Eileen Roberts, 4022 Post Road, Winston, Georgia. Madam Chair and Board, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here to express my strong opposition to the proposed millage rate increase. After 32 years of service as an executive assistant at a Fortune 500 company, supporting executives across marketing, merchandising, supply chain, finance, and budgeting, I bring a solid understanding of business operations and financial accountability. At a time when essential services are stretched thin and residents face rising costs, it is unconscionable to suggest an increase. Taxpayer funds should be managed with creative solutions and shared sacrifices. I question the financial oversight of our county. After a bit of research on each of you, it is evident that none of you hold a financial degree, a degree in finance, an absent that has...[1662.01][1662.01](APPLAUSE). An absence that has contributed to the financial crisis we are now facing. But however, you depend on your CFO for expertise, for advice, and guidance. He's supposed to be the subject matter expert. It is his direct responsibility. The CFO displayed numbers at the last meeting but failed to explain the budget. I appreciate you explaining the numbers today. The lack of engagement and responsibility was apparent. In the corporate world, such performance would lead to immediate dismissal.[1699.83][1699.83](APPLAUSE). The community expects transparency and accountability, not policies that insulate leadership from the hardships everyone else endures. You should reduce waste and demonstrate solidarity with those you serve. You nor this community are ready for a vote on this increase. We are owed an immediate and thorough audit. There are several concerned citizens doing in-depth research on the decision-making in this county. Before approving another millage rate increase, I urge you as a team to explore cost-cutting measures, starting with eliminating unnecessary expenditures. There was a lot of, in that reinvestment slide that I saw that could be shaved. Let your conscience be your guide. I am a praying woman. I'm praying for each of you, that you will evaluate your decision-making. Who among you is willing to analyze the numbers and present viable alternatives? I agree with the live streaming of the budget meetings to the citizens to provide complete transparency, as was done in the past. I also second the proposal of a citizen budget committee to provide oversight of our, the citizens' money. I, along with several others, volunteer to serve on that committee. I strongly urge a no vote on the millage rate increase. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Sharon Backdell, six-three-three-one South Skyline Drive, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Overspending the budget isn't anything new for this BOC. You do it every year. Every year, you bring in more revenues than projected. To me, this means the citizens are being overtaxed. In eight years, you have never rolled the millage rate back all the way. You always keep extra funds coming in so that you can spend more. In 2020, you raised our taxes twenty-seven percent, not because our assessments dropped, but because you spent too much and ran out of money, kind of like what's happening now. Usually, you revisit the budget mid-year because you know extra funds are coming in, so you just adjust the budget to spend that money on wants, not needs.[657.04][657.04](APPLAUSE) I looked, I looked at the November 2024 financial report, and as of November 30th, your expenditures were a hundred and sixteen million dollars. There was still five million dollars left in general appropriations. If, according to the final budget report, you spent a hundred and thirty-seven million dollars, where did that extra ten million dollars go? We know where the money is in 2025, but we still don't know about 2024. Why did you decide to spend the extra money instead of saving it if our reserves were so low? Four years ago, you made a resolution not to spend more than the previous year's revenues. Maybe you should add to that resolution. Any extra revenues over-projection will be put into the reserves instead of being spent. According to your resolution, you could set your next budget at a hundred and forty million dollars, the revenues for 2024. I have heard you speak about cutting back on public safety funds. You need to take a closer look at where the expenditures are increasing. Public safety has always taken a bigger share of the budget because it is the most important expense to us. If you look at the budget books, it is the general government that has increased their percentage of the expenditures. If you have extra funds coming in every year, you do not need to increase our taxes, you need to cut wasteful spending, cut the fat out of the budgets, and roll the millage rate all the way back.
Excuse me, if I could ask you to please hold your applause until the speaker completes their statement, that way you don't impede on their time. Thank you.
Quensina Gardner, nine-thousand Keaton Creek Drive, Villarica, Georgia, three-zero-one-eight-zero. Again, I'm Quensina Gardner. I'm both a therapist and a business owner here in Douglasville, and today I'm speaking on behalf of my parents, as well as many other retirees in our community who are living on fixed incomes. A thirty-three-point-two-six percent property tax increase isn't just a number, it's life-altering for people already on tight budgets. As a therapist, I see firsthand the ripple effects of financial stress on mental health, anxiety, sleeplessness, and strain within families. And let's be honest, some residents are already struggling with mortgage delinquencies or even liens on their properties due to property taxes. Adding a sudden spike in property taxes could be the thing that pushes them over the edge. I'm not saying that our county doesn't need the revenue, I'm saying there has to be a fairer, more humane way. Why not start with cutting waste, auditing spending, or phasing in smaller increases that people can actually manage? Or better yet, create exemptions or caps for seniors and those on fixed incomes. It just doesn't sit right with the very people that you represent. County budget problems shouldn't turn into survival problems to the people.
Good morning, Glenda Barnett, sixty-nine-eighteen Oak Valley Drive, here in Douglasville. So I came in here with a speech prepared, but I really want to start by addressing the presentation. Appreciated the information, but I also want to address that you said that we didn't go over budget. A dollar is over budget, so you did go over budget to start there. Secondly, I just want to say that as a resident of both, I live in the city limits of Douglasville as well as Douglas County, you have many residents that are being double taxed. I am double taxed. I'm looking at my 2024 tax bill, county tax eighteen thirty-four, city tax two thousand thirty-five, and that does not include the school tax. So I'm looking at a tax bill for six thousand dollars. So when you come in front of these constituents here and you say it's forty-one dollars a month or four hundred and ninety-six a year, that may seem very minimal on your salaries. That may seem very minimal to you, sitting across the table, being able to go on two retreats a year, when half the people can't even afford a vacation to Alabama, okay? So don't come across from your community and your constituents and say this is necessary. When you talk about necessary, there's a lot of things in that budget that can be cut that are just wasteful spending, that if I'm over budget, I don't have the liberty to go say, you know, I'm over budget, let me go ask my neighbor if I can tax them. That's not how this works. And you can guarantee that I'm going to do everything in my power, should this pass, to make sure that anyone sitting on this bench, that I'm going to go on into the community and make sure that we vote you out, because that's where you need to be.[973.54][973.54](APPLAUSE) If you cannot represent me in this community, you don't need to be sitting on this panel.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and District Commissioners.
Good morning, good morning.
This is the second meeting, and I think you can kind of see you struck a nerve here with us taxpayers. We done fired up. Mark, thank you for the good job you're doing in District Four, I think you're trying to help us there. Like this lady said, I don't think y'all understand where we're coming from sometimes. I pay tax on my home and my land, I pay tax to the city on our business, and if you're under the age of sixty-two, you get to pay school tax. And, you know, that, that might, that four-hundred-something dollars may not sound like a whole lot, but to senior citizens and people that are just barely making it, like this lady said, that might just push them over the edge. And, young families, I mean, you can't even take your kids out to eat sometimes, it's so expensive, you know, with all the expense, it's not just this tax, it's just everything. And I'm against the tax at all. I don't think, or raise it a bit, if anything, or come down, cut back on some of the spending. My parents taught me when I was a boy, said always live, be within your means. Don't overspend what you don't have. And I think the county government should do the same thing. If you don't have the money, don't do it. And I do have a few questions. We have apartments popping up everywhere. Are they paying their fair, fair tax? I don't know. I really don't know. And we have a bus system that's losing four million a year, some, some fixing needs to be done. I guess we probably need the bus system. I know years ago, some of the citizens telling y'all how it was going to cost the county, and it is, but that needs to be fixed. And why is tax money being spent on billboards telling people to come to Douglas County? Hadn't, hadn't we got enough people here now? I'm not against people, but we're busting at the seams. The roads are packed, the hospital is full, the schools are overrun, the fire and EMS are spread too thin, and the law enforcement is having to work overtime just to try to keep crime under check. And as I said, I'm against this increase, and I think myself and others here, if any of you vote against this, we're going to remember that come voting time. I think--[1132.64][1132.64](APPLAUSE) I say stop the waste and stop the overtaxation. Thank you for listening to me.[1141.08][1141.08](APPLAUSE)
Linda Kreip, five-nine-one-five Dorset Bridge. So I'm a property owner in this county, and I continue to pay rent for my land, and I'm paying more taxes on my house that I'm already paying for, and that to me is overtaxing, and I'm ready for it to stop, I don't know if you guys are not as well, too. The citizens are fed up and being, of being overtaxed, we're really tired, and we've also started a petition. I'm not sure if you guys know this or not, I'm thinking some of you do. This is a petition that was started twenty-four hours ago. We have eleven hundred signatures on this in twenty-four hours. Think of what we can do in thirty days for a recall.[1184.83][1184.83](APPLAUSE) So let's begin with some of the things that we're spending money on. Punkin Town Park, budgeted for fifty thousand dollars, already staggering eight thousand percent over budget, over four million dollars being spent on that one, and it hasn't even opened yet, and we don't even know when it will. Then there's potential of a not, another library in the county. Do we need another library? Probably, what is that, twenty million dollars? Nope. Community services centers, the centers, the libraries are not being used now as it is. And the library that's being renovated right now, the one on Selman Drive, is already two million over budget. Already two million over budget. To me, that sounds like project oversight. Does that, doesn't that sound like that to you? We also heard this yesterday morning about Madam Chair said that there was four million found in the general fund that could possibly be given to the CSB. I'm really against that. If there's four million dollars found, it needs to go back to the citizens.[1252.08][1252.08](APPLAUSE) And let me tell you why the CSB doesn't deserve a dime. In reviewing the P-card statements, and by the way, I don't know if you know who I am, but two years ago, I got the GBI to investigate the P-cards, and it shut them down. That was me, and I'll do it again. I can promise you that. But I was reviewing the P-card statements for just four months, and the CSB is blowing through money like crazy on the P-cards. Four hundred and forty, four hun, I'm sorry, four thousand and four hundred dollars spent at the kitchen, bar and grill in it, in Douglas County in January. Forty-four hundred dollars at a bar and grill. Why are we paying for that? Should we be? No, we shouldn't. The Board of Elections spent around three thousand dollars on the same thing at the same place. Should we be paying for that? No. No, we shouldn't be. So the money is being spent. I've got four months of statements here from the P-card, and we're already at a million dollars. That's a lot of money on P-cards, and there's a bunch of Amazon purchases on that. Why are we doing that? Let me talk about Amazon purchases. Commissioner Raxton, you have to lead by example. Three thousand dollars at Radio Chondry in December, for what? Four hundred and fifty-four dollars on tumblers. Monogram, personalized, for twenty-four cups. That's what our commissioners are spending money on, too. Lead by example, trickle it down.
Hi, I'm Holly Leja, I live at thirty-three-twenty-two Sutherland Court. I'm glad she talked about the P-cards, because I'll tell you what, y'all order from Amazon more than all of us combined. Like, I'm surprised a courthouse doesn't have packages up to the ceiling every day. I'm an average, everyday person, you know? When the economy gets tough, do I go ask my neighbors to help me? No, I don't. I buckle down. Do you know what we do? We don't eat out, we eat at home. My husband takes his lunch to work every day. Y'all spend money like it's crazy. I mean, you think, just, like, I saw just one charge, for thirty-four dollars at Chick-fil-A. Well, you know what? That was somebody's personal meal. That was not for the county, that was not in our best interest, and those thirty-four dollars add up everywhere. Your spending is out of control. There needs to be an investigation into this budget. We need clear, clear, clearly defined what you guys are spending your money on, because, like she said, the P-cards are out of control, and I hope that Linda does go get you shut down again. Because you know what? We average citizens, we can't just go ask people for money when we're, when we don't have enough in our budget.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Henry Robinett, thirty-one-seventy-two Lake Monroe Road, Douglasville, Georgia. I'm here to request that the millage rates should not be increased. Currently, in our county, there are more houses sellers than buyers. This is a sure indicator that we are in a financial bubble. History shows that all real estate bubbles will pop. We saw this in the Great Depression of two thousand and nine. Until President Trump took office, our economy was in a death spiral. By raising tariffs for these countries that block imports of America-made products, the economy has started to turn around. As anyone who has been on a cruise knows, turnaround is a slow process. Free trade has been a disaster for our citizens as our good-paying manufacturing jobs were all exported overseas. In short, our taxpayers are tapped out. For those churches that dispense free food, it is common to see folks driving BMWs, Mercedes-Benz, and other expensive cars in line to receive free food. Businesses are closing, people are abandoning their houses as they cannot afford to live in our county, where warehouses and grocery stores are major employers. No wonder, then, that most of the residents must commute to other counties in order to earn a living wage. From that, it is easy for them to relocate to other counties where the amenities are better than what we have here. However, our commissioners are living in a fool's paradise wherein taxes can be raised without producing unpleasant side effects. Our mall, like many others around the country, is dying as people have switched from shopping in malls to shopping online with Amazon and eBay. It is time for the county to have its version of D-O-G-E. Cut out the unnecessary employees who do little or no work, get a handle on the P-cards, quit spending on the community service board that has failed two audits, the facility in Ruthia Springs that's empty and unused. It's a white elephant selling that property. Get rid of nepotism. The following has gone viral, this Facebook. We taxpayers want a valid explanation for the following concerns. And I think a lot of them have already been emphasized, that we have a park project overrun. Punkin Town Park, originally budgeted at fifty thousand, actually cost to date over four million. Represents an eight-thousand-percent increase over the initial estimate. Concern number two, unnecessary new library in District Three, proposed request, despite a fully functioning library in District Four less than three miles away. Another library is currently undergoing seven million taxpayer-funded remodel, less than six miles away from, which is two million dollars over budget. Adds redundant facilities instead of improving or expanding existing ones.[1653.66][1653.66](PHONE RINGS) Sir, my time up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to give you guys a copy of these.
Okay.[1663.66][1663.66](APPLAUSE) Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I'm hello, I'm Ashley Miller, I'm seventy-two-sixteen Brigadoon Rose. Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chairperson, Commissioners, and fellow residents. Thank you for letting me speak today. I stand before you not just as a taxpayer, but as a neighbor deeply concerned about the proposed increase in our county's property tax millage rate. This isn't just a number, it's a weight on every family's monthly budget. I did things the right way. Went to college, bought a home, and, and I, I am a productive citizen. Only getting home was a dream of mine, but now, I don't know if it's worth it. With everything continuously going up, now the board wants to raise taxes. For many, this large increase is more than a line item. It's tough choices. For working families, single-income families, fixed-income seniors, or anyone juggling utility and grocery bills, this isn't just a small increase, it's real stress. We all recognize the importance of standing institutions, schools, road safety, but we ask, is this increase truly necessary? Do we really need a new library? The CSB receives over one-point-five million dollars annually from the state and has failed audits for more than two consecutive years. Should additional local funding be allocated? No. I work in the compliance field, and if my, if I cause my company to fail an audit, I don't receive a pay increase. So why should we give them more money? It's ludicrous. Your leadership must reflect accountable stewardship. As the board deliberates, we urge you to honor and honestly weigh taxpayer feedback. Ask yourselves, is the hardship this increase imposes on families in Douglas County worth the additional revenue? In closing, let's remember, strong communities aren't-- Ask yourselves, is the hardship this increase imposes on families in Douglas County worth the additional revenue? In closing, let's remember, strong communities aren't built by squeezing wallets, they're sustained by trust in you all. When property taxes rise, families feel the strain. Douglas County can grow and serve without undermining its residents' financial stability. Thank you.
Good morning.
I probably don't need the mic, but I will use it as well. Commissioners, fellow citizens, my name is Doyle Sedell. I reside at 3194 Brantingham Road, here in the city of Douglasville. While I have been granted homestead exemption, y'all have to keep in mind, I am retired and on a fixed income. So while I'm here of sorts, representing myself, I'm representing young married couples who can't be at a meeting at 10:00 a.m. or 6:00 p.m. because they're at work. I stand in strong, very strong opposition to the millage rate proposal increase. And from a background perspective, I have an earned degree in business from the University of Wisconsin-Madison. My undergrad studies were done at the University of Mississippi in Oxford. Your presentations were great, but I do understand public relations and marketing and their effect when they're made. You spoke about costs are going up, and you're very good presentation, informative. But do keep in mind, Commissioners, everybody's costs are going up. I don't want to get to the point where I have to eat dog food and sardines for supper, breakfast, and dinner, as well as lunch. As was stated earlier, we voted you in, and if this millage rate that you've proposed is approved, I will join this young lady and others in ensuring that you don't be re-elected. That's not a threat, it's a promise. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. Y'all look rather bored, maybe we should spice things up a little bit. It seems that crimes against taxpayers are happening right under our...
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Heidi Holsey, 380100 Road, Douglasville, Georgia, 30135. And as I was saying, that crimes against taxpayers seems to be happening. The Finance Department has doubled in size, literally doubled in size, yet bills are late and not being paid. This Board hires the finance staff, and the failures are falling back on you. P-cards are for official government use only, and allow me to remind you that misuse of $500 or more is a felony punishable with prison, and supervisors share that responsibility. Purchases made with personal accounts through companies like Amazon and Walmart are also illegal. Meanwhile, employees are facing furloughs, punishing the workforce for leadership failures. I don't feel that's right. And county administrators coming and going, making six figures, and constituent services, a fancy name for party planners, are making more than the deputies that are carrying guns. And let's not forget that, you know, we have to have a $44,000 Christmas tree. I just don't think that, you know, what a total misuse of priorities, while you're wanting to raise our taxes. Ramona, you sit on the community service board lobbying for state and federal funding, yet are wanting to raise our taxes. I believe this is a total conflict of interest. Taxes are theft and fraud, as it is. And the fact that we have to rent our property that we own, and watch right in front of our faces, theft by conversion and conspiracy to fraud, is rather disheartening. You work for us. And let's take under advisement that we're finally watching, we see you. I couldn't find a place to park, I had to create a place to park today. Transparency is not optional, and neither is accountability. No one is above the law. We should be proud of our county, and instead, it's really, really embarrassing. Stop with the awards and the ceremonies that I get to see on Facebook about, you know, y'all lined up, another award, another ceremony. Do your damn job, and do it better.
Ms. Heidi, Ms. Heidi, Ms. Heidi. Ms. Heidi, it's Dr. Jones. I know you call me Ramona. Yes, thank you. All right, you're next.
Good morning. Can y'all hear me? Okay, my name is Michael O'Hara. I reside at 8934 Highway 166. We've got to work on this. Okay, that's the first time that's ever happened.
There you go. You have it now, thank you.
Okay. I reside at 8934 Highway 166 in Winston, Georgia, commonly known as Fair Play. And I'd like to just say, I agree with just about everything that has been said today. I read a book one time called Ecclesiastes, and it says, "There's a time for everything under the sun."
I believe you.
It really is. And a good mariner or a good seaman will read the seas, he'll read the skies, to be able to anticipate what's coming. And that's incumbent upon you. Each one of y'all that took this job, I'm sure it didn't expect all this hoopla. I mean, y'all didn't sign up for this, but you got it. Okay, you got it. Now, the taxpayers here, my friends, fellow citizens, have spoken justly, and they're upset, you know? In the last many years, we've seen in Douglas County, good money thrown after bad. A lot of that's been going on, some people have been called out for it, and some people have suffered penalties for it. Read the seeds. Don't let this happen to y'all. You know, a loud, often tumultuous voice is crying out from the darkness of Douglas County, saying, "Uh-uh, don't do this, it's a bad idea." You know, you ever heard of trickle-down economics? Everybody's heard of that. Y'all see what's going on in Washington? It's trickling down. You know that Dodge thing? It's trickling down. So if I was a deer, that's a dog in the woods I'd run from. Make sure your plate is clean.
Yes.
I know my time is running short. The one place I see we could save some money, this Douglas County Connect thing, is like a rented mule. Exactly. Y'all probably don't know anything about rented mules. You rent a mule for $20 a year, it don't cost you nothing, you plow, you feel, everything's good. But when it comes that third year, and you're having to rent it for what it costs, it ain't a good deal anymore. Prudence is called for here. Is this something we really need? Is this attracting the people we want? The people who will contribute to the betterment of Douglas County? Or is it attracting people who simply want to live off the path of land? Now, I'm retired, I live on a fixed income, but I'm asking y'all to be prudent in your judgment here. Each and every one of you, you know what's right, you know what's wrong, and you've heard everybody's speech here. I ask you just to consider.
Good morning. My name is Ted Wgluski. I live at 3322 Highway 166, the opposite end from where he lives. Lived in Douglas County 43 years. Little bit of time. I'm going to approach this from a little bit different perspective. When the CFO gave his little talk last week, there were some things he left out of the totals. He left out exemptions, he left out appeals, and he left out delinquent taxes. Okay? Now, the exemptions and appeals, they take time to process, I understand that. Now, the delinquent taxes, and I did a real quick environmental scan off of their website, okay? And, you know, we're short $2.3 million, okay, that they haven't collected. Now, some of that goes back to 2022. And when I go and I look at the biggies, okay, they're not the average citizen, they're companies, okay? $45,000, okay, Four Points Investment. Now, no one probably knows what that is, but if you go and do a Google search on that address, it's Carrington Point Apartments. Okay? Next one, $43,000, okay? And Medaya and Ermi LLC, okay, it's on Cherokee Boulevard. That's Baymont by Wyndham Motel, okay? And the next one, GB Douglasville Owner LLC, it's Industrial Park, off of Six Flags, right down there. And that's $42,000 that haven't been collected, okay? The last one was really a surprise to me, but they have paid some of the 2024 taxes. That's Fitness Investors Douglasville, right there on Chapel Hill Road, LA Fitness. Total, that's $153,000. That's not going to make up the $10 million deficit, okay? But we got some outstanding businesses that need to pay up some money. And I don't know, I don't think that's in your realm, I think that's in the Tax Commissioners' realm, but, and I'm sure Douglas County will collect that before they sell those properties. But that might help in some of this. The other thing, I worked for the state for 12 years, okay, between 2000 and 2013. And we went through that period of time at the end of 2008, 2009, and every other month, we were getting, or our Commissioner was, getting a letter from OBB, "Cut your budget 2% or 3%." They don't care how, but they wanted to cut. And to the credit of the Commissioner, and to the credit of the top directors, we were down to buying no copy paper. Now, they had to go to the final thing, which was furloughs. And all the employees were happy to take two days a month for four months. So I don't think Douglas County is there yet, where that's a necessity, but there's things to look at. Someone mentioned the audits, I saw that, too. If my director failed audits two years in a row, she would have been gone. And all the audits, financial audits I've been through in the private sector, same thing.
Good morning, I'm Elaine Jenkins. I'm Elaine Jenkins. Good morning, I'm Elaine Jenkins. I live 46, 40, 60 Turnwood in Douglasville. And I just wanted to tell you all to read the room. Nobody wants this. But we have to look at who we want to attract to Douglas County. If we don't have parks, if we don't have libraries, the people that we want, we want here, they will not come. But you have to look at the people who live here and what they want. They don't want Christmas trees, they don't want roads, they don't want new schools, they don't want good buses, they don't want any of that. They want cheap prices so they can live. I am a retiree. I've been retired 10 years, I have been in law enforcement for over 20 years. Half of my family is either educators or law enforcement. So I understand exactly where these people are coming from. They want good education, they want really nice pension plans, but they can't get it. And y'all can't get it either. If they can't get it, y'all can't get it. So you're going to have to start with yourselves. The lunches, the dinners, all of that has to be cut out, and you have to come here and show us this, that you did cut this out. So if we're suffering, you're going to have to suffer, too. Otherwise, we will vote you out. We have no other choice.
Hi, excuse me, I'm Susan Bowie, 2935 Flowers Drive, here in Douglasville, over 30 years. And normally, I come up here and I have something written out. This time, I'm just going to speak from the heart. I'm listening to y'all, I'm glad you came. We missed you last week, Mr. Commissioner. I've heard a lot of things on Facebook, I've read a lot of things, some people are saying, "I, as a Commissioner, I'm not going to vote for this." Thank you, I appreciate that. But what I want to talk about is, we get these numbers, the $4 million for the transit bus. That doesn't tell us that we're still getting $2 million back from federal grants. That doesn't tell us that when you crunch those numbers, it costs the average Douglas County citizen $3.28 for that bus. That bus is going to take your mama to the doctor, that bus is going to take your mama to the grocery store, and I bet you, you'd pay somebody $3.28 just so you don't have to do it. So don't try to make your money by taking away something that you've already given us, something that has proven to work. We have paraplegic people that use those buses, we have the elderly that use those buses. I was in a car accident recently, totaled my car. If I couldn't have found a ride, I'd had to use that bus to go to the doctor this morning. I have a new roommate who doesn't want to come up here and speak. She lived in Paulding County, they taxed her out of her home. She had to sell her home and is now living with me, because she can't afford $4,000, $5,000 a year in property taxes. So you don't want the buses because you think they're going to bring people in? It's the people that live here that use it. It's not taking people out of Atlanta and bringing them here, we're not getting crime from other counties. It's the people that live here that use those buses. It's the people that live here that use those libraries. You don't take away because you messed up. You find another way. And so what I can say is this, I'm usually on the other side from most of the people here, but we will come to your district when it comes time, and we will hold up a sign, and we will say, "This Commissioner voted against property tax increase," or "This Commissioner voted for it." And that choice is yours. But both sides have spoken, liberals and conservatives, we can't afford it, we don't want it, but don't take away the services from the poor, from the elderly, just to meet a budget. There are other ways to cut, and you can do this, and we support you, and we will do whatever we can do to help you get there, but show up and do it.
Good morning, and thank you for letting me speak today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kelly.
Sabina Kelly, 9565 Grande Drive, Winston, Georgia. I want to thank you all for last Monday's meeting. We were heard, because we didn't want the $250,000 on there. By the time I got home at 12 o'clock, it was gone off of this website, and it was corrected. So we do appreciate y'all, when y'all take things into consideration. But I do want to say that the bus system does work. I haven't written it many times, but when I got stranded at the airport, had no way to get back to Douglas County, the bus system was there for me. I did not know also, it goes to Atlanta, if you need to have a doctor's appointment in Atlanta. So we do help the elderly and the people that need to go to their doctor appointments, and we appreciate that. The 911 new building, I'm not for that at all, because I don't have the money to pay $29, and now I don't have the $41 a month to pay. Since South Wire's already gotten out, I'd like to know, because nothing in our financial report shows that, how much does Amazon pay for property taxes to be here in Douglas County? How much does Walmart or any other large corporation? We keep getting big meetings coming in here, so that we can schmooze these big businesses that need to come in here. Let's schmooze the citizens and give them less taxes, or keep the tax rate as it is for 2022. or keep the tax rate as it is for 2024 and not raise it. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon and thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity to speak to you folks and these folks out here. I thought I was going to a movie, but. In, in any case, I would just say that I'm Daniel Martin. I live at 1831 Dover Court in Kensington subdivision off of Presley Mill Road. I am the president of the HOA. We have 129 homeowners, average age 64. They are seasoned citizens. Most of them that live there are on somewhat of a fixed income. And they have submitted 18 questions that I have given to you folks up there instead of taking the time to go through those 18 questions. I think it's imperative that we understand a couple of things here. One, this doesn't seem to be a issue that people here are not aware of because they're on top of what's going on right now. I know for a fact, and I just found it here, the American Property Casualty Insurance Association has just announced, in what they call a preview announcement, of what homeowners' property taxes will go up next year. And right now, it's anticipated between 14 and 19 percent. That's your prop, or that's your insurance on your home. Now, I need to take up the dues in our HOA. Fifty dollars a year, a half a gallon a month. And I'm getting pushback because of that simplistic increase. And we haven't had an increase in five years. But services go up, cost of doing business goes up, I get it. You did a wonderful job by getting folks to come into the, here, meaning large corporations, you know, Amazon, uh, the Lionsgate. I mean, I get all that, that's, that's wonderful news. But when you start looking at what's going on in our current administration in, in Washington DC, and you see what's going on in DeKalb, we see what's going on in Cobb, you see what's going on in these other locations, this is not an easy proposition for you folks. But it's not an easy proposition for us folks. Dollars are tight today. Dollars are gonna get tighter. When they tariffs actually kick in and when you see what actually plays out, what's being done through the administration, every one of these people, including you, are going to suffer. This is not a good situation right now in the United States. We're divided. We're divided here. And it's just a terrible situation that we're in right now. It just so happens that most of these folks out here are seasoned citizens. Just respect what they're saying to you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marlene Anderson. I live at 4761 Planters Walk in Douglasville. I have a question about the presentation. First of all, thank you for the presentation. On there, it says something, when you had the forty-one dollars was the total, at the top, it said something about general fund and ten dollars was going to that. Can you explain what that is? What is, what does that entail? Am I saying the wrong one? I'm sorry, on the forty-one dollars a month total, it had a list of all the things and how it was gonna be, the money was gonna be divided out. I would like the explanation of why the first one said. What, what's that momma say? The general fund?
The general fund, but is it any way possible that our assistant county administrator can meet with you offline? Because we're not able to answer questions. This is your moment to just.
Well, that needs to be explained because it seems the majority of that money is going to that. General fund means anywhere to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Instead of all the ones were specifically dedicated, amounts were dedicated? And maybe that can be investigated. You could lower that instead of increasing, because I'm against this as well.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Hello, Mary Lou Ross, 4147 North Quail Drive. Mary Lou Ross, Douglasville, Georgia. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I live at 4147 North Quail Drive. We moved to this county 33 years ago because it was one of the lowest tax brackets in the county area surrounding Atlanta. Now, it's the highest. And how did that occur? By a lot of different injunctions, grants, the bus grant being probably the largest. The original cost for that was gonna be five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. But then there was the grant that was brought on. And that was six million that we now have to absorb. And as you see, it's brought us into part of the deficit. I, for one, was against the buses in the form in which it is now. I was for the buses in the form that it was beforehand, which was basically dial-a-ride like Carrollton has. If we could find a way to reassess and reevaluate the buses so that it could be more efficient for our citizens, and I also am a business owner, and some of my citizens that come to see me utilize that. And I am grateful for that, for them to be able to have that facility to use. However, at the amount of the cost for us, it's not a viable situation. As far as the county tax goes, that's ridiculous as far as everything else with everything going up, as everyone has said. I thank you and please vote no.
Good morning. Sandra Moore, 7036 Rose Lake Circle. Thank you all for this opportunity that you have given. I come and I'm just speaking wholeheartedly. And I am speaking against the mileage rate as we have been taxed and taxed. And when we even came up with the property tax. And one question I asked, I'm like, what do Douglasville even have to offer? We don't have anything. We don't have decent restaurant. We have to go to neighboring counties. And then now, with everything, with the rising of everything, like was spoken, to take a family out, you gotta have two-hundred dollars just to go eat. So I came with amazing grace, how sweet the sound. Everyone here is making a sound. Please do not let it go to deaf ear. Okay? Do not make it seem like right now that you all are just sitting there and you have already made up your mind. Do not do that to the people. That is an injustice to us. This is, people have taken their time. Like one man said, the younger people can't be here because they're working. And then you're gonna turn around and tax the senior people out of their homes. Apartments are steady going up. Okay? But the ones who have been here from the beginning and now to the end, okay? And I'm gonna leave it with, hear our cry. While the other side, please do not pass us by. Just don't. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, my name is Sandra Washington. I reside at 2935 Flowers Drive in Douglasville. I'm the roommate. I was a recent Paulding County resident and I was taxed out of my home because the millage rate went up so high and school taxes went up so high by through the millage rate that it was just unaffordable for somebody on my fixed income. What I would encourage, I think that one thing that draws people to this county are those amenities and those things that were on that list of things that we need. I mean, I know people are saying, no library, we don't need another library. Well, I disagree with that. We do need libraries. We do need, we do need libraries. We need the buses.
Point of order, please, please respect.
We help our, we help all our citizens that way. But there are other ways. The millage rate, putting the burden on the property tax owner is not the right way. There are other means. There are other ways of gaining taxes. That tax across the board, like a sploshed. And those are things that, other means to get those services that we do truly need, that bring people to this county, that want that better life here. And the millage rate is just not the way to go. And, and thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Melissa Lidle and I live at 560 Petticore in Lithia Springs, Georgia. I didn't bring no notes. I don't have a business degree except for my uncle. My uncle taught me a lot about how to, to take care of yourself, take care of your home and do all your stuff. Don't live beyond your means. Hope for your wishes and, you know, in finance. I have, our home runs on a strict budget. We, we take care of our bills. And if we have leftover, we get to do things. Always live like that. However, we don't need to pay double what I'm already paying taxes. I just became a senior citizen as far as my taxes go. I finally got to get rid of school taxes that I don't have kids in for 25 years now. Thank goodness. But however, what I'm paying right now is gonna be the double because of what you just showed on that chart. Doubles my taxes next year. Can't do that. Home still has to be fixed. The home calls my name all the time. Paint me, wash me, clean me. Oh, no, the big bill come out. HC went out, sixteen thousand dollars. I cringed writing that check out. But I had to get my HC fixed. It was last fall, thank goodness. But every little thing comes up. We came home from a little mini trip, my whole basement was flooded. My hot water heater decided, the little, the little things. So we had to clean for two and a half hours before my husband hit the road. But you know, these people already done gave all your information. Like I say, I don't have no business degree, but I know how to run my home. I don't do it in the red, I do it in the black. I cut back when I have to, eat peanut butter and jelly and go, and go to bed and thankful that I have a home.
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all need to do the same thing for our county.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To the citizens of Douglas County, to the Board of Commissioners. My name is Jeff Priest. I live at 4905 North Hilton Road, Winston, Georgia. I, I guess I'm the living graph that's come in today. Me and my wife, we're married very young, at the age of 16. Shortly after we moved to Douglas County, we've been here 43 years. And I've, and I've watched the county grow. And you know, when we first moved here, the taxes were low. We built our forever home in 20, 2004, thinking that we would retire there. Now that I'm reaching retirement age, we're rethinking that because we've watched our taxes go through the roof. Now, I've seen the graphs. And everybody sitting here today can probably amend this. And by the way, I'm a business owner and a pastor. And so I know, I know a little bit about counseling people with their marital problems and, and issues. And, and most of the time, it's over money. And, and my advice to them, without exception, is you don't have a money problem, you have a spending problem. And that's, that's what we're looking at here today.
Please hold your applause.
Is, is a spending problem. But the graph that I wrote down, and I didn't tell, I didn't write a speech, but I did write down some numbers. Our taxes have went up in the past three years 20 percent. My property taxes is over ten thousand dollars a year. Now, now I don't have a college education. I'm a hard worker, live by the rule of God, try to treat my neighbor like I want to be treated. But it has gotten so expensive, I have to escrow, pull out of my monies every month, eight-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars to pay my taxes. That's a lot. The, the talk out in the construction areas, don't build in Douglas County. Don't live in, don't move to Douglas County. Everybody's talking about the, the libraries and all this other stuff. No, it's the taxes that's gonna keep people from coming to Douglas County. Everybody's moving west, moving to Alabama where the taxes are low. So when you, when you look at it, if you look at it on a national sense, the nation voted. We want our elected officials to be accountable, to do what's right. Listen at the, the citizenry. We're, we're all struggling to make ends meet right now. Just like you're trying to figure it out. When, when somebody comes to me, always listen to them. Those that are looking for money outside of their own source, I tell them, you're wrong. You need to, you need to tighten up your belt. You need to figure out how you can save that money. Being married at 16 years old, I can tell you, I learned how to budget pretty quick. We ate beans and cornbread. And we worked from week to week. But we learned how to budget our money. And I think the people spoke today. And my advice to you, with all respect, is we don't need to look out for more money because that's the problem. We need to look in and tighten up our belts and make the adjustments and not tax these great citizens of Douglas County anymore. Read, read the tenebres, so to speak. We've, we've been taxed too much and times are tough right now. I think we can make some cuts. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pastor. Thank you. I was a little nervous about stopping the pastor, so I said, let me just see if he. You have the floor.
Good morning. My name is Terry Davis, 3665 Riverwood Way, Douglasville.
Can you speak up a little bit? Thank you.
3665 Riverwood Way, Douglasville.
What was your name again?
Terry Davis.
Okay.
And I stand here, I'm not only representing my household, but I'm here for the people who weren't able to come. I'm here for all of the disabled people who weren't able to come. If you look at me, you would look at me and just think, I'm just this normal person. I'm disabled. We have a household. My husband works. I do own a business. However, guess what? I'm disabled. We live within our means. And when I go back and I look at the budgets, I look at the spending, the P card purchases, four hundred plus dollars, Amazon purchases, restaurants, four thousand dollars. Something needs to be done. I think you guys need to go back to the drawing board, figure this thing out. There needs to be some cuts happening on the government level to simply raise our taxes. That's not it. Whitney Kenner Jones, if you drive around your district, I guarantee you, I guarantee you, you'll probably see clothes in outside, furniture outside. People are getting evicted left and right. Homes are being foreclosed. People are already stretching its height. I mean, they're having to choose, do I pay my bills or do I eat? You know, it's horrible. It's horrible. There are so many people moving to this county. You know, schools are overcrowded. The Sheriff's Department is having to work extra hard. You know, those are the things that we really need. But when you're doing frivolous things, eating out all the time, four thousand dollars a month, we, Linda, we need to look into that. And I'm gonna do my part, again, to make sure that you guys audit it. And it's not a threat, it's a guarantee. And I would advise every last one of you guys to tread lightly because we are watching. And I will make certain that if this is passed, I'm gonna do my very best. I have a lot of time on my hands, trust me, a lot of time. It, it's fun. I, I enjoy this kind of stuff. I will make sure I do my part to make sure each and every last one of you guys are voted off. And that's it. Have a great day.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Chris Sheehan, 7033 Rose Lake Circle, Douglasville. I appreciate that each and every one of you are here to hear our voices. And the trumpet is sounding loud, I believe. I moved from California here back in 1980. And I have seen this county grow, but I have seen a lot of corrupt things take on in this county that has really deeply affected many members of my family as well as other members. And now I believe that the council and the city is beginning to hear the trumpet sound to get it together. Now she's, everybody's speaking about the taxes, yes. I, I live on, right off of Rose Avenue on the gated community. I began to look at my taxes the other day and I told my husband, I said, do you know what? what? We pay county and city taxes. Now when we lived over on Yancey and Stewart Mill, we paid county taxes. Do you know that I have a gated community? We're responsible for our streets. What takes place in that subdivision? In addition to our homeowners association? I've paid my dues. I'd like to know why I, as a senior and retired, as well as my husband, we have a trucking company that's being severely damaged in this economy that we're facing now. And I'd like to know why I'm paying city and county. I don't get it. I get my discount for being a senior, senior citizen for the schools. Alabama people retired do not pay taxes. My father-in-law lived in Seminole, Alabama, and I'm gonna tell you what, he didn't pay a penny when he retired. There's a lot of people here that are getting ready to retire on the board, I can see, because we're all getting up in age. And there's many of us that are already here. And we're like, "We need our pennies to go further." I mean, and homeowners, somebody spoke about our car insurances. I paid $4,000 for two vehicles. The interest, I mean, the insurance went up. This is ridiculous. We can't even take care of our city streets. You got the big commercials, I mentioned this way back, when they're trying to build on the corner by the hotel over here, by Walmart. Okay, you guys, you can't even take care of the streets. Bright start. You got one way going west, you got one way going east, you don't, you don't have any of the off-ramps that we need. They spent a ton of money on Fairburn Road, they spent money on Thornton Road, but here we are in Douglasville, you can't even get across the interstate. You're gonna hit a hole. Every time I go across that interstate, I'm, I'm like, "Oh, there goes my front end." You know, and we, we just need to figure out things for the community. But raising the taxes isn't helping anyone out here, nor the people that'll be here tonight. As this gentleman said, I've been raised, I was married when I was 16, too, and I tightened my belt. I had to get everything in order. So this is the thing we gotta do, is think of the people that are sitting here. Thank you so much for your time, and I pray that you use wisdom.
My name is Raquel Welch, I reside at 3110 Stone Oak Drive, Douglasville, Georgia, 30135. I'm a native of Douglasville, Douglas County as a matter of fact. I grew up in the Chapel Hill area, and I've seen so much things and the changes that Douglas County has done. Some have been good, some have been bad. I get emotional, and, just to come up here, because I was debating if I was coming or not. But I'm advocating. I have a five-year-old son. We were riding past Tent Village down here, a couple of weeks ago, and he asked what it was. And I had to explain that to him. And, uh, he was like, "Mom, will we ever have to live there?" I told him, "Son, that's not your problem. That's my problem. And that's why I'm here today, because I say no. Vote no." We have been told, if you do the right thing, and you know, buy your house, it's better to buy a house than rent. And I did what I was supposed to do to be able to buy a house. Now, will I be able to keep it? What will I have to tell my son if we have to move? Where will we go? That's not y'all's problem, I guess, but mine. And I'm here today to advocate for my son, for y'all to vote no.
My name is Charles Yakout, I live at 6790 Grayland Drive, here in Douglasville. And I would motion that we spend some money on a mic system. That everybody can be heard. These are very, very difficult times, and they require difficult decisions. And I certainly appreciate each and every one of you guys being tasked with that, with looking out for these people. You know, I came in here and I was thinking about that library and thinking, "Who goes to the library?" But I'll tell you what, we might need that library if people get booted out of their homes. They might need someplace to go. So I might have to rethink that. You know, the other thing is too, is that I, when I think about, not only my expenses going up, we talked about automobile expenses going up, we talked about homeowners insurance going up, all these things, right, continue to rise. You know, food is going up. And I help support my, my children, who are now parents, so that they can afford to continue to keep stuff on the table. When I have a challenge, I have to make tough decisions, and those tough decisions involve me making cuts. You know what? It might be something on Amazon I want, I might not be able to get it. There are wants and there are needs. And what we need, is we need to take a hard look at our budget, and again, I appreciate the presentation. But when I hear the word amended budget, what was it before it was amended? You know, and, and I guess, you know, when I, when I think about this county, we need more homeowners, we need to encourage people to be able to buy homes here, because the more people that rent, guess what? They are not paying property tax. And the burn keeps falling on the few. And my heart breaks when I hear stories like I just heard, and the young lady that came up here, because I remember being in that same situation. And I am working, and I took out of work today to come here because of all you, and what we're, what we're faced with here. I know you're hearing the voice. I'm just asking you guys to make the tough decision. The right decision is to cut and hold. You take a look at what's going on? You know, I was looking at some economic stuff, I follow economics very closely, PPI, CPI. Take a look at terms like stagflation. You guys don't know what stagflation, take a look at it, it's very real. And all I'm just asking, is don't follow your conscience, follow the voice of what you've heard out here today.
Good morning all, Commissioners. Tryn, come on Mike. I spoke last week as well, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff Klassen, 5911 Dorset Bridge Road. And my, one of the gentlemen brought up earlier about the companies that we're not collecting the taxes from. And that, that's a big question to me, because I managed a company here in Douglasville for 30 years, and we, we had to pay, and, and it got collected every month. And so it kind of brings me to what I've been thinking about, and on the porch out here, every month, there's an auction for property because taxes weren't paid. Do those places get the same treatment? So I'm just wondering, and would love to have that question answered, on the businesses that are not paying taxes, whether it's apartments, or companies, or whatever it is, that sounded to me like a pretty good amount of money that we are missing, and we need to be collecting it. So I just ask that you vote no to this. I'm, I'm on a fixed income myself now, I'm retired, and it's, I'm thankful that the school taxes were dropped off of mine, because if it wasn't, I would be, like the gentleman earlier, it would be over $10,000, and I wouldn't be able to do it, and my property might be on the front porch.
Good morning. Nadine Chesson, 5845 Sloan Street, Douglasville, Georgia, 30135.
Can you repeat your name?
Nadine Chesson.
Nadine.
Nadine Chesson. Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to be here today. As a 21-year resident of Douglasville, the county and the city, I am alarmed that every time you own mismanaged funds, it's the citizens' problem. We elected you and expect you to serve us. We're not only your employer, we are dedicated to you by remaining citizens of this county. Each one of you Commissioners, and I have been to meetings where all of you have been, are accountable to us, not just to yourselves, not just to your households. You're accountable to our households, because you affect what we can and cannot do. As residents of Douglasville, and the city of, the city of Douglasville and the county, we deserve better than what we're getting. You all incentivize businesses, big corporations, Google, Amazon, Great Point Studios, that's the landscape. You incentivize them to come here at our expense, and that is unacceptable. And I'll say it again, that is unacceptable. The property owners of the city of Douglasville and the county of Douglas County should not be held accountable to your bad decisions. You should not be incentivizing a company at our expense. When you gave them that tax incentive, you did it at our expense. Now you sit before us today wanting to spout a budget that wasn't a budget, because you gave away millions of dollars, not just this year, the previous year, the previous year, and who knows how far back it goes. We do need to audit, and I am with you. If you need assistance from the citizens, ask for it before you make amends. We're here, we're listening, we're asking you to be accountable. We shouldn't have to ask you to spend our money wisely, because you expect us to do it in our own households, but you don't do it for the county. Tent City should not exist with the amount of property taxes we're paying. But it does. But nothing I saw from the county administrator showed any resolution to that problem. What I saw is you're causing the problem to grow. What are you doing about the citizens' needs? Specifically, ensuring that what has been established by each individual property owner in this county can be maintained, not at our expense, but at the expense of the businesses that you incentivize to come here for basically free, with the tax incentives and tax abatements you give them, that are not warranted. They don't add jobs to the community, so don't spout data centers bring jobs, because they don't. They tax our energy grid, they tax the citizens of the county, they are eyesores to the people that live around them. You don't listen when we say we don't want that? You still bring it. I heard the Commissioner for District Four.
I don't have that problem in my district. Over your district. You do now. You didn't stop it. You saw it when you happened in District Two. But you all are just joining in at the expense of the tax, paying the citizens who are property owners in this county, and that's unacceptable and unstoppable. I object to any of those rate increases, but I object also to the lackadaisical behavior of managing expenses and having checks and balances in court that make you do your jobs efficiently, effectively, and regularly. Dodge is necessary in Douglas County because of your actions and inaction.
I'm Brian David Clark, we're at 4706 Daniel Mill Road. We've been in Winston, Georgia for about six years now. We came in from the Netherlands to come back to Georgia, our home. I was in Powder Springs, my wife is from Acworth. Douglasville used to be this wonderful place that I used to come to often, actually, as a young man. I work very hard, we have four children. Our taxes have increased, and increased, and increased. Last year, I believe, we were having a hard time trying to figure out who's gonna make everything work for our family. Our children don't, don't attend the county schools here. Our children are homeschooled. We have online school for oldest son, so that he can keep up with things, because we don't like how they're run here. We live in an area where our roads aren't really kept up, where we have traffic issues. There's a light that was put up on, that was put up on Post Road. Thank you for the light, I think it caused more problems. Right? We have beautiful exits that's running up through Douglasville that we never had before, and I'm, I'm a Georgia boy. We don't have beautiful exits here, we have pine trees that mark exits. That's how we know how to get around, that's what we do. Your beautiful exits, I don't know what they did for my family. I know where Lithia Springs Road is, I, I know where the Walmart is, I know where everything is around here. I didn't need nice exits to do that. I think you did that to bring more people to Douglasville. We see a lot of apartment complexes going up. We don't like that either. We're grateful to have more people moving into the county, but with more people, more needs, more money needs to be spent. I also get to be part of a church group, and I help our men out in our church group and our whole church. Not only do I get to help our men out, but in this county, most of the people that are here are providing service for others who can't. We take people around to the doctor's office, we take them to the grocery store, we help them make their next house payment, we help them clean up their yards, we help them when they're sick. We, the citizens, do that, when we don't have the funds necessary in the county, and that takes more of my time away from my family. I enjoy serving the people here in Douglasville, I enjoy serving the people in Winston, anywhere I can find them. We were out doing tree service for people, back when the hurricanes came through and down South Georgia. We do stuff like that out here, too. As you're going through and making your decisions, I work at a manufacturing, manufacturing plant, I'm an operations manager there before, in the Netherlands, I ran my own plant. I believe you need to go back to the basics. I think you need to go back into lean manufacturing. I think you need to go back to the basics and look at what this county truly needs and what your citizens really need, and what are value-added options. Anything else needs to be cut out. If we're not a community that is going to support apartment complexes and can handle that kind of business, you should not continue. Right? If you need a big business to move in, the best thing for a business is dollars coming in their door. Yes, tax breaks are awesome, but having people buy from that business is amazing. We do servers for data centers. I need customers, I need my prices to be appropriate, so my customers come in, I need to be attractive. But I don't push that hard on my employees. I need them to make, I need them to be at work, we try to offer the best we can for them in our situation. I'd ask you to do the same for us.
Treat us the same way.
Wayne Bennett, 3123 Freedom Court, Douglasville, 30135. I spoke at last week's meeting, and during my, what I had to say last week, I'm coming back to repeat this week, because we've got an audience, I'm sure, at least partially different than what we had. Commissioner Ratston, I, I saw your proposal or request to create an audit committee, or whatever, but in, audits are usually after the fact. And what I'm proposing is a before and during the fact. I am here to repeat my proposal that the county create a citizens' budget oversight committee. Made up of citizens that have budgeting experience. I have budgeting experience, I've worked with it in my professional career. But these, I envision this being a committee of people that sit down with the department heads, the chief financial officer perhaps, the county administrator perhaps, but I want, the citizens of this county deserve that oversight of every single line item in all of the county department's budgets. I think we can find a lot of fat to trim. As I mentioned last week, how many county cars has the county got? Who are they assigned to? You know, there's insurance being paid for those. I mean, it's not only the cost of the vehicle itself, but there's insurance, there's fires, there's maintenance, you know, there's a lot of stuff that, there's a lot of people that have probably been assigned county cars that really don't need county cars. And another thing is, are they county employees that live in Douglas County, or do they live in other counties? That's something else that needs to be taken into consideration from a justification standpoint. We need a lot of scrutiny, we need a lot of justification of what is being spent in this county. Supplements are another thing that needs to be looked at. This was just brought to my attention last week. There are county employees, I don't know how many, but there are county employees that are receiving supplements for various reasons, that are paid to them as part of their paycheck. Yeah, yeah. Even for, some people for clothes, the person that told me about this is a former county employee, and she said, "I had to buy my own clothes, I didn't receive a supplement for clothes." But these are the type, and they may be justified, but these are the types of items that need to be looked at. I'm talking about from, everything from pens and pencils up, is what I'm talking about. And citizens, if you agree with what I'm saying, I urge you all to contact your county commissioner, your district commissioner, and tell them that this is what you want. Thank you.
Seeing no one's behind me, I'm probably the best-looking person to be here today. Commissioners, Madam Chair. I asked this question at another meeting.
Can you state your name, please?
Yes, DeWitt Roper, 6826 Cedar Mountain Road, Douglasville, Georgia, 70-year resident of Douglas County. At another meeting, I asked this question. Raise your hand if in the last four years, your groceries have gone up? If your gas has gone up? If your homeowner's insurance has gone up? If your auto insurance has gone up? School supplies? Everyone here has seen their expenses increase greatly. Inflation reached 9% several years ago. Interest rates are still high, some here have lost jobs, some worked two jobs, but we all have to live with what we have. One man said both his vehicles were over 20-years-old. Some said they quit... Some said they quit going out to eat, others foregoing vacations and some choosing food over medicine. The difference between the citizens and you, the government, is we have to pay our bills, but we also have to pay your bills. Most all governments, no matter at what level, municipal, state or federal, their budgets always address their wants, not their priorities or their needs. Families aren't allowed that luxury. If they overspent, they can't go to their employer and tell them, "We've overspent and we need a 30% pay raise." They'd be laughed out of the room. As you can see, the people here are not laughing. All governments have plenty they can cut. Employees, debit cards, SUVs, take-home vehicles. Let prisoners pick up trash instead of subbing it out. It worked for decades. That's just a few. That's what private businesses and the taxpayers do. The money you spend comes from waitresses who are on their feet eight to 10 hours a day. It comes from dishwashers, roofers, asphalt workers who tolerate extreme heat, eight, 10, 12 hours a day, and then the rain and the cold in the wintertime. It comes from truck drivers, nurses and teachers and so many others. To ask the hard-working citizens of Douglas County to cut their family budgets and do with less and then take the fruits of their hard-earned labor and their sweat equity so you can raise your budget borders on the grotesque. We have some of the highest taxes in the state. We were told the county receipts had increased year over year. We don't need a larger budget, what we need is a more efficient government. Thank you for your time.
Okay, do we have anyone else that's interested in speaking or coming forth? If there's no one else, this public hearing, this public hearing is now closed. Board of Commissioners, certainly we've heard all the comments this morning. Do you all have anything to add before this evening?
Sure.
Madam Chair, you have the floor.
Well, y'all gave it to us today. We hear you. We heard, we hear you. We've heard you, last meeting, this meeting. We understand exactly where you are. There are some of us who are right there, we do, that I know of. I will not be the burden on your family. I won't. And I'm not saying that to appease you or to get your vote. I live here, too. My family has to make tough decisions. So I've got a kid in college that is not cheap and we have to tighten up our belts. If we got to do it, I shouldn't have to ask you to do it or ask more of you. So, you know, it will be some hard decisions for us, no ifs, and buts. There will be some things we're going to have to cut. Some other departments are not going to be happy with us. So either way we go, I'd rather them be upset at me than you because at least I can lay my head down at night then and know when I did the right thing. So I yield back, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioner Kenner Jones.
I echo everything Commissioner Alcaraz just said and I would add, I say it all the time, I would never ask the public to do something that I would not do myself. That is the very reason that I don't have a P card. Because I need to think about every dollar that is spent on behalf of these citizens and if I am not willing to pay for it myself and wait for reimbursement, it doesn't need to be purchased. I don't even ask for reimbursement for mileage when I'm going places to do things on your behalf because in my mind I am thinking, "You don't get paid to drive to work, I should not get paid to drive to work either." So I absolutely hear you. We talk a lot about the seniors, but I'm a millennial. I graduated from college into a fire economy and it has never been put out, not once, since I have been a working adult. We are the highest educated generation in history and the lowest paid. I work three jobs currently, right now, as an attorney to make ends meet. So I understand from a visceral level how you feel and would never make a decision lightly to increase your taxes because they increase mine, too. I pay city, county and school tax in a two-income household and it's still a struggle to figure out what is a need versus a want every single day. And as Commissioner Alcaraz said, it is a balancing act. No matter what we do, somebody is going to be pissed off either way. But damn it, that's what we're here for. It is what it is. And I get why people are angry and frustrated. When they proposed the three meals, I'm sure that county administration and CFO, they were not happy or excited about our responses because, again, we recognize that that is what you all have to pay. Every time I hear someone say, "It's just $40 a month," I think about my blind neighbor who does not have a vehicle or a way to get to where he needs to be, cannot afford medication. That $41 is not a "it's just" for somebody like that. For the people that live in Tent City, it's not a "just $41." For the people who cannot figure out how to make sure that their grandparents don't get taxed out of a house that they paid for 40 years ago. So it is serious. We are paying attention. We don't take it lightly. We will make the right decision or at least I know I will do what will help me sleep at night. Madam Chair, I yield back.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioner Kenner Jones. Commissioner Raxton, I believe I saw your hand move.
All right, thank you.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning. I love serving in this community. I love being a resident of Douglas County. I've been a resident for over 30 years. Both of my sons are graduates of the school system here. And I, too, am what I like to call a 30-year dues-paying member who has paid taxes to the city, the county and to the school system and very proud to have been doing that. Also, we do not take this job lightly and we know that we're going to have to make some very, very tough decisions. That's why, as you heard earlier, we're looking at things internally that we can do, that we can strengthen, that we can tighten up. And that's one of the things that you heard earlier, we're looking at a budget or, excuse me, an audit committee. But we also have a tax abatement committee that is very active and looking at what are the corporations paying and ensuring that we're holding their feet to the fire. So I definitely want to ensure that we call that out as something that we're actively doing. But also, we need to find additional revenue streams. And that's something that I'm a very strong proponent of, to see what additionally, besides sales tax and property taxes, can we utilize and we can bring in to help subsidize and support the services and the resources that our residents deserve here in Douglas County. So with that, I would just share that we are very, very much going to take all of your input into consideration. We're going to have to make a tough decision this evening, but it is an honor to serve and to be in a position where we can do something that's going to positively impact this community and to our residents. And with that, Madam Chair, I yield the floor back to you and thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Raxton. Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this was intriguing. This was a moment of understanding. And yes, I, too, pay taxes, city and county taxes, so I'm double taxed. However, I just want to make sure that we all understand there's a lot of moving targets or to put this puzzle together requires a lot of soul searching. Truly, a lot of soul searching. Because the excellent services that this board has provided and that we have spent and encouraged in this county, we still would like to have that type of service. And I, too, are looking at what that looks like with what we have to work with. I don't think any of us sitting here is looking forward to saying either an increase, but more of a decrease. However, it's got to make sense. We talk some about the buses, we talk about CSB. We talk about a lot of things or dynamics that's going on here. So I think this board needs to take a step back and pause and take a serious look at what's there and what's there to offer and make sure we understand that is what you're willing to either remove from this budget or add to this budget. Because it's got to be a realistic approach. We all can sit here and say all these nice things, how great things are, but the reality of it is, I said this over a year ago, that financially we was in trouble. But I heard from none of you. Not that that's a bad situation, but I saw this coming. I saw this coming over a year ago. It's not, it's not up for debate. And yes, we have done something. And we are still continuing.
Point of order, please.
Hold on, hold on. It's okay, it's okay. See, it's not emotional with me. It's factual. And the truth, it's, the truth of the matter is, we have many services, we have many services that we need to reevaluate, take a serious look at, to make sure where do we go from here? Not to get emotional and just say, "Cut it because I heard some of you say that you want it. I heard some of you said you don't." What is important is the question. So I'm not going to do a song and dance show for you. And I'm not, I'm only going to say this to us, to us, that we really got to take a hard look at where we are and really take a step back and see how we got here. So, and I do look in the mirror. And I can tell you how we got here, but I'm not going to prolong the conversation. So with that being stated, we will make a decision, that's for sure. And no matter what the decision is, everybody is not going to like it or dislike it. But the decision will be made this evening. So thank you, and Madam Chair, I yield back. Thank you again.
All right, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. And certainly I'll close out with some remarks. Board of Commissioners, point of order, please. Am I, can you hear me? Okay, I just want to make sure you can hear me. First of all, I would like to commend our bosses and this amazing citizens of this county for showing up this morning and voicing your opinions. That means so much to me as the chairman of this county. I woke up this morning about 5:00. I said, "What can I say to our citizens?" Because I know you were going to come in here and you were going to be excited and I appreciate the enthusiasm and the energy. But I wanted to just make it very clear. Board of Commissioners, we collectively answer to the citizens of this county and each of us, in my opinion, have done our due diligence with separating our emotions from our responsibility of listening to our bosses of this county as we examine this proposed mileage rate increase recommended by the county administrator. This increase is not by us, this is by the administration. We're listening, just like you are, citizens. Let's be clear. The county administrator merely makes the mileage rate recommendation. However, the Board of Commissioners are not obligated to accept or agree with the recommendation. More importantly, the Board of Commissioners, and I value your expressions of concerns because all households across this entire nation are feeling the pressures of economic volatility, inflationary pressures due to rippling effects of tariffs, deep cuts at the federal level and not to mention a perplexed social services system that keeps me up at night exploring solution-based options to sustain mental health, behavioral health and developmental disabilities for our underserved taxpayer-paying citizens, which by the way, was never part of this mileage rate increase proposal. Furthermore, I appreciate your energy and your enthusiasm around the proposed mileage rate and your concerns did not fall on deaf ears. I am thrilled to see so many citizens here today and I wish this room was overflowing for every BOC meeting because your voices matter. As the chairman of this board, I made it very clear, we are committed to being good stewards of taxpayers' dollars even in the face of challenging, of this challenging economy. With all due respect, this board was clear on our position with regard to the proposed mileage rate increase during the first public hearing, during the very first public hearing. And I say this by indicating on August the 11th, during our first public hearing, the newspaper headlines read, "Residents, Commissions, Speak Out Against the Mengeage Rate Increase." And furthermore, it stated within the newspaper article, quote, unquote, "The four commissioners present join those speaking out against the mileage rate increase." Quote, unquote. To my bosses, who are the citizens of this great county, my statement regarding this board works for you is unwavering because we work for you. You don't work for us, we work for you. And we work tirelessly to hear your concerns. But yet, politics seems to find a way to interject itself by rage and revolt, rhetoric and fanfare by some. While others read the newspaper and the ones that read the newspaper on August 11th, subsequent to the first public hearing, gained a sense of understanding that the Board of Commissioners are well-versed at reading a room. Board of Commissioners, I really want to commend you today on your grace under pressure, your professionalism and composure for us, and I say us, as a body. We have heard from our citizens and we heard, but I, you know, I'm going to be honest, sometimes when you scream, I can't hear you. I hear you, I heard you, I heard you at 5:00 this morning. And I, so we'll see you today at 6:00. And I understand what it means to eat greens and beans and cornbread and no meat. I've been there and I'm still there. And I have a heart for the people. That's the only reason I serve for this position. I have a heart for the people. So therefore, we will see you back at 6:00 today and thank you again for coming out. Thank you. I need to adjourn then. Yeah, I need to adjourn. Just, just, just a reminder. Do we have a motion to adjourn, Board?
Second.
Okay, do we have a motion to go into recess? Okay. We have a motion and second, all in favor going into recess indicate by raising your right hand. Okay, thank you.